Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Please, please join me for the pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people of this land. One nation, founded on the foundations of liberty and of justice. Can we get a motion to approve our administrative agenda?
I move to approve the agenda with the addition under six A, Resolution seven dash twenty-three, a resolution establishing water and sewer rates for the city of Amsoil with the updated rate sheets included in our packet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved with the amendment. Moving on to presentation from populations and visitors. Are there any visitors in the audience or on Zoom that want to submit any comments? So let's move on to the consent agenda. I made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moving on to the item number four, the public hearing. So we will now, so we will now have a public hearing on certifying municipal services and revenue sharing at seven oh seven. I will write our findings, Officer Yoj, number one.
Good evening. So this is something we do each year. The state has a revenue sharing portion that is basically a portion of the liquor sales proceeds are distributed to cities that are participating in the revenue share program. And it's based on a formula of licenses and population in the city tax rates. There's quite a few things that go into how much we get each year. But prior to that, we have to have a two, actually, public hearings. The first one we had at the budget meeting where we had, we were going to receive public testimony on what we could possibly use the revenue sharing portions toward. And then tonight, we have a second hearing on what was proposed for, for the use for this year. Currently, we have it all allocated to our park fund to help fund the, the programs that we have, maintenance of the equipment there and everything. But we need to have a public input a second time. And then we have a resolution saying that we have given two hearings. We certify that we have a certain number of municipal services in order to be able to receive the, the proceeds.
Second.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Does the staff have any additional comments? So we will close the public hearing at seven oh eight PM and move on to, um, what? Uh, what are we on? Um, so between a motion for resolution, what does it say?
I move to approve Resolution four dash twenty-three, certifying municipal services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, but.
Yep, they're coming in now. It'll come, here you go.
Abstentions? There are none. So move on to the next one. Is there a motion for Resolution five dash twenty-three?
Yes, I'll move that we approve Resolution five dash twenty-three to defer to election revenue sharing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passive? Okay, so we will now, if not possible now, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, the budget, um, at seven ten again. Um, we will write our remarks, Maroni, and we are.
All right, so I'll take over. Um, so yeah, this is our hearing for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Uh, we, we spent the May ninth meeting deliberating on, on the budget. Following that, uh, it's, uh, we took a look at the cash balances and made sure that they were going to be close to what's, what's expected for next year. And they haven't changed a whole lot, so we're feeling pretty good about the numbers going forward. We just need to have a final public hearing before we go ahead and adopt the budget for the year.
Ronnie?
No, not really. I think, I think it's a good budget. It's sustainable. It fits within our forecast model and the forecast model is consistent with what we projected.
Is there any member of the audience who'd like to spend a little bit of time? Does the staff have any additional comments?
Was there anything that?
Uh, no, our ending fund balances are projected and we actually won't know what those, uh, real ending fund, or I guess I might say reconciled ending fund balances are until we close that month out, which will be our thirteenth month. Um, but they're, they're on track and on target, but that's always the case with an ending fund balance.
So we will now close the hearing at seven twelve and move on, um, to a resolution for, uh, Resolution six dash twenty-three.
I move to approve Resolution six dash twenty-three, adopting the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year budget in the amount of eighteen million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars as presented and to levy taxes at the permanent rate of three point six, three, two, seven per one thousand dollars of assessed value.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or abstentions? And motion passive? So we are really on to the public hearing on orders to find new, new circumstances. I say that correctly. And then we ordered, ordered six eighty-six. And we will go ahead and open the hearing at seven thirteen PM. We invite one hundred and thirty-three groups of us.
Yeah, and just to provide a little bit of background, uh, there, as, as counsel knows, we've talked about this a number of times. There was a couple of court cases, Martin Versi versus the city of Boise and Blake versus Grants Pass, uh, that were decided. Those cases weren't appealed further. Uh, but those cases had to deal with homeless encampments uh, in public spaces and what the city's ability to, uh, move or evict those, those encampments. And, uh, those two cases basically ruled that it was considered, um, basically cruel and unusual punishment to, for a city not to provide accommodations for those who, uh, did not have shelter. From that, uh, our legislature adopted, uh, House Bill three, one, one, five. And, uh, basically what that, uh, House bill dictated is that in public spaces, the city has to have a plan to accommodate, um, homeless folks who might dwell within the city. And there's a lot of different aspects in that plan, uh, of what a city can and cannot do. One of the things that we can do is we can set reasonable time, uh, and place, uh, camping restrictions. But we just can't restrict homeless camping through the city blanket. Just can't be forbidden in all spaces. A lot of cities are taking different approaches to this. And it'll be my guess that there will be some challenges to a number of their approaches because no, no one has the same approach. As a matter of fact, uh, there's, there's probably dozens and dozens of different approaches by cities. But what we've decided to do is to take a very light approach. And, uh, our approach is to preserve and protect quality of life areas, which is residential, uh, neighborhoods and parks. Uh, and so that's what this and the, and the, uh, um, next two ordinances intend to do. If you've looked at the red line version, you'll see that we've changed very little in our ordinances. Uh, and, uh, and we've done that because we're not trying to go in and do some very complicated, very strict, uh, restricted approach. Uh, we're just going in and saying, these are areas where activity, certain activities are allowed. These are areas where those activities are not allowed. And so, uh, six, eight, six, uh, really, we just moved, uh, removed word, the words that it's illegal to camp in the city. Uh, that was a blanket nuisance ordinance. Uh, and, and so, um, that was taken out. There was a couple of other small edits while we're in there. There was, uh, an edit around, um, uh, setbacks for chicken coops. That was something that we actually set in the previous update. But when we transcribed or adopted the ordinance, we got the wrong number in there. So I'm re-proposing that. Um, and then there was some language in there about exiting people from, uh, city park. Occasionally, we have people that violate the rules in city park and we trespass those folks. When we put together that park ordinance, we had the Boise and Grants Pass case in mind. So there was some language in there about providing notice, which was within that, uh, court decision. Uh, and we were intending that notice to be for camping at the time. Uh, now that House Bill three, one, one, five has been approved, we were able to go in and clean that language up and say, that activity just isn't allowed in parks. It's, uh, it could be allowed elsewhere in the city, but not in parks. And there was some confusion about our ability to notice and trespass people immediately from the park. So we, uh, we amended that language as well because under Oregon State statute, uh, we can trespass people that violate, um, our rules. And so occasionally we do that. We have people that vandalize the park or maybe they're drinking in the park. All of those are violations of our ordinances or they're fighting, whatever the circumstance might be. If the officer, um, sees fit to remove them, uh, from the park for a certain period of time, they have that ability. There is a appeal of that, uh, trespass, uh, to the city administrator. Um, and so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, we are looking to get this approved in, in, in a single meeting. Uh, if, uh, if counsel, um, agrees to this unanimously. And, um, this also does include an emergency order because we have to have this completed and approved by the end of June, so.
What is the exact wording?
Well, you should, in your, in your, uh, packet, right after the staff report, you should have a condensed version of everything that's been changed, and that's in ordinance seven thirteen. And then if you go to the next section, what you're going to have is a red line version, which looks like this. And it just has the strikeouts. In this particular ordinance, most of the edits are, are really a punctuation edit, capitalizing city administrator. Um, so all the lowercase were capitalized. Our city attorney, they got, just as a habit, so we accepted all the changes. But most of those, most of those passages are that when you get to, um, animals, you can see five has been changed to twenty. And then, uh, if you get to, um, section, uh, five, you'll see city administrator again. It was more grammatical. Uh, and then when you get to section eight, uh, sidewalks and driveways, this was some language. Basically, even though it's already in another ordinance, we wanted to make it really clear for the public that you can't drive over a curb. Uh, and it should be obvious, but we still are dealing with lots of that. So we wanted to have some plain language in there. And, uh, so that was changed. And then, um.
I was just looking specifically for the one. James, impressed?
Uh, this is authorized dumping. Oh, it is, it is section four F.
That's animal waste. That's animal waste.
That one's totally crossed.
Uh, taking lodging or camping in a car, outbuilding, uh, so it should be under public health. Right here. Taking lodging or camping in a car, outbuilding, other place not intended for that purpose. In addition, there will be no overnight camping and on public property without our city approval.
So just because of the, or.
I think that's because it was crossed out.
Um, or later or minutes for the general audience. Uh, the question that I have been regarding, uh, our, if he isn't in town. Where would they get that?
Well, what we're not regulating is industrial properties and, uh, commercial properties and public right of ways. And that, we have to allow it in areas. We have to allow it in zones within the city. And as council recalls, when we discussed this several months ago, uh, you wanted to preserve, protect the neighborhoods and the parks. So it would be allowed in public properties, public right of ways. They couldn't just set up camp on private property. And they, they couldn't set up, uh, you know, they couldn't block eighty-one access or something like that. Now, I don't, I don't think that we're going to have, you know, an immediate issue, uh, citywide, uh, certainly not in, you know, the downtown corridors or something like that because that's just, you know, probably not realistic. We're very rural and I think this is more of an urban issue that's occurring in bigger cities. We don't have a lot of services. Um, so I'm, I'm, but we do have to allow for folks that are experiencing homelessness. And, and we, you know, if we, we have folks, we'll certainly try to get them into, um, area shelters. Uh, that would be our approach.
It still requires parental approval by the city. Well, there is also.
Well.
Not camping or tending on public property without, we include those other areas that we said before.
Yes, basically, as we get into the, there's a camping ordinance, which is the last action, and that action would address the regulation. And that sets time and place requirements. Yeah, yeah, we are. It's.
Later tonight.
Yeah. We have to do all three ordinances to be in compliance. So I did, I did mix up my two ordinances. I was talking about the, uh, uh, eviction from the park, and I think that's in the park ordinance, not in this one. So I did confuse you a little. I apologize.
Are there any, um, in the audience? Um, does the staff have any additional comments? So we will now have a public hearing at seven twenty-four PM and move on. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading by title only of ordinance number seven thirteen and ordinance amending ordinance number six eighty-six, the nuisance ordinance as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? None? Any extensions? Generally, motion passive.
So I will move on to approving the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number seven thirteen and ordinance amending ordinance number six eighty-six, the nuisance ordinance as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passive. So council will now move on to public hearing on orders regulating the use of public spaces and amending orders, ordinance, ordinance six ninety-one. And the start line will be at seven twenty-five. Uh, Ron will be.
Well, the staff report is basically the same, but this was, uh, one in a series of three ordinances that we, uh, were advised, uh, to change. So the, the park ordinance, uh, if you go through the red lines again, most of them are grammatical, uh, changes that we made there. Um, if you look at con, conduct, uh, section six, uh, basically it says it's unlawful for anyone to camp in the parks. Um, and then if you, uh, look at animals, um, uh, we put some plain language in there for, um, folks that are leaving their, their animal waste uh, on public property. That's been in our ordinance for years. It's in our nuisance ordinance and our park ordinance. But, you know, some people want to see it a little bit better plain text. And, and we are having a lot of issues with people leaving animal waste. Um, and then the, um, the exclusion language there in, uh, section twenty-three. And that was the change. Uh, basically that sums up the bulk of those changes. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, I'm sorry, sent you.
Sorry, I mixed up those two. I, I, you know, they've been mixed up in my head for a while.
They're very similar, which doesn't help anyone.
Are there any comments on that? Uh, any additional staff comments? So we will now close the hearing at seven thirty-seven PM. And move on to the negotiations. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading by title only of ordinance number seven fourteen and ordinance amending ordinance number six ninety-one, the parks and public spaces ordinance as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Are there any opposed? Abstentions? Or motion passes?
I move to approve the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number seven fourteen and ordinance amending ordinance number six ninety-one, the parks and public spaces ordinance as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passive. The council will now move on to public hearing on the ordinance regulating camping on city property. We'll start the public hearing at seven twenty-eight PM. Move on to the staff report.
Uh, yeah, the staff report is the same. This is a new ordinance. And this basically describes, uh, conditions in which campsites, uh, can be occupied. Uh, and those areas that are prohibitive. And the areas that are prohibitive are the areas council outlined, and that was in city parks and in residentially zoned neighborhoods. Um, it, it does, uh, also put a time limits. So, uh, you know, people can come and sleep overnight, but during the day, uh, you know, they, they will need to not actually be camping. And, um, and then the accumulation of personal properties, uh, forbidden. And so it's a fairly short, simple ordinance. We did keep it as council asked us to, fairly simple. Happy to answer any questions.
Public comments?
We don't think we'll have any questions, but that will fit the requirements.
Uh, you know, it's just hard to say. It's, it's really hard to say. Uh, you know, I mean, we have no idea where homelessness is going in the state of Oregon. Uh, and how it's evolving. It's really grown in the last few years. And maybe there's, you know, other programs and avenues that are approved by the state that helps alleviate that. I don't know. This is kind of a Band-Aid. This, you know, this certainly is not going to, uh, improve anybody's lives that's experiencing homelessness. Um, it, it's just giving them a place to be able to shelter. And, um, hopefully we have enough resources really for the amount of homelessness that we see that, uh, we can help shelter or get those folks in the shelters. Um, but with the three, one, one, five, we didn't want to really get into designating a spot. You have to provide facilities there. Um, or creating a shelter of our own because we, you know, um, our budgets are so small. Um, you know, how could you accommodate if you had twenty or thirty people? Um, so this seemed to be the most rational approach for us to take.
Council, sorry. Seven, um, we will now close the hearing at seven thirty-one PM. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading by title only of ordinance number seven fifteen and ordinance regulating camping on city property and prescribing penalties as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passive.
Move to approve the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number seven fifteen and ordinance regulating camping on city property and prescribing penalties as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passive. The council will now open the public hearing. Uh, did we read it?
We did it.
We're on to five, which is old business.
Old business. Old business. There are some of them. Um, number six, new business. So we have the item number four, six, eight, uh, Resolution seven, dash twenty-three. It's related to water and sewer rates between Amsoil. Uh, see, there's greater wrong rate.
Yeah, and just to give counsel, uh, and maybe anybody that is watching a little bit of background, uh, our water utility ordinances, uh, years ago had a three to six percent automatic increase, uh, in without action from the council. So we would analyze the rates needed and, uh, staff would just simply propose that rate. And one of the things we did when we redid all our ordinances was, said, we should bring these actions in front of council and the public, discuss the need and adopt those rates, uh, yearly. And so we set, uh, our rates to be adopted to coincide with the budget. And when we changed the ordinance, we said council will fix rates by resolution, uh, each year. And so, uh, the process that we use is we use our forecast model, which is the same process we use for our budgeting analysis. And, uh, and we look at, uh, uh, the, um, rate increases that are need, that are needed to, uh, sustain our operations and meet our fiscal policy requirements, a ninety-day operating balance. And, uh, and so we try to, uh, using that forecast model, develop what those rates are. Now, last year, um, uh, we were supposed to take an action, I think, of, uh, something similar to this. And we, we, we wanted to give the community a year to adjust. So we used up some reserve funds to buy a year of. of operating in our policy level. Uh, and we simply raised the rates three percent, which was uh, just coincides with kind of our our floor uh, for for utility rates. Um, this year, we've kind of used up that reserve and what our analysis shows is we really need a five or six percent increase in water and at least an eight percent increase in sewer. And so we proposed a five and an eight. Uh, the net effect on the bill is six and a half percent because they're not, it's not both combined over the course of the whole bill. It's five in water, eight in sewer. Uh, they're billed this at the on the same bill, but they're separate utilities. It's not thirteen, it's six and a half. Yep. And so typically we have these effective the thirtieth of June, but council, as you recall, directed us to go out and do some additional outreach to the community. We put it on a reader board sign in our newsletter, uh, just to give folks notice and and I think we might have put it on our, I think it was on our bill, our last bill statement. But they have been calling. You know, we've had people call and and ask about it and the timing and you know, we've we've told them all the, you know, everything's going up. I mean, the cost of operating the utilities going up. We've really tightened our belt to be able to keep the increase at a minimum. And so along with the budget approval that you just did, we do have the five and the eight percent factored in. Um, and so I'm happy to answer any questions about this resolution.
Do you know what the average rate increase would be?
I think it's in your your chart. Well, six percent, it's about seven dollars on the total bill. Yeah. That's about right.
Yeah, one ten eighty right now, right?
Yeah.
Ten eighty-two.
One ten eighty-two. Days and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
General, the same thing, it's not part of our.
Yes, not.
He was saying, what is our current?
And and that that's not being increased. This is simply water and sewer.
So the average water and sewer bill has been about.
About one sixteen something, yeah. Uh, we have actually looked at water rates. Now, you can always find a lower water rate depending on the situation of the city. I could pick out cities that have lower. But average, we're still quite a bit below some of the average utility rates across the state.
I move to approve resolution seven dash twenty-three, a resolution establishing water and sewer rates for the city of Amsoil and setting water and sewer rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passes. We will now move on to another item sixty, West Tech Engineering. Is there?
Yeah, uh, this is our engineer of record, uh, West Tech Engineering. And be just because we're dealing with a lot of the A R P A grants, uh, you'll hear in my city administrator report, uh, later on that we're really, it it's a lot to manage these grants and it's somewhat of a moving target. A lot of the uh, rules are changing and even though the grant contracts have been signed, they're federal rules, so we have to accommodate those changes as they're changing. And one of the things that we were advised to do was to go back and amend our engineer of record contracts. Um, as a matter of fact, we're going to be bringing other contracts forward. Our integrator of record, anybody that we actually have an ongoing service contract with will come back with similar A R P A language. These are the clauses that are provided to us by uh, the state and they just recommend that we include them. Uh, we'll jump through all these hoops because one, we want the money. And two, these are all reimbursement grants and the last thing we want to do is spend money, go to apply for the reimbursement and then there'd be some hiccup. So if they tell us jump through a hoop, we're kind of jumping through the hoop.
Is there a motion?
Move to amend the engineer of record contract with West Tech Engineering to include the A R P A clauses.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Was opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item sixty, uh, resolution eight dash twenty-three, it's sending the city of Amsoil with the compensation into coverage.
Well, I'm gonna do it. Josh said you're already standing up there, so. I I I will take this staff report. So, uh, this is a resolution we have to adopt every year to extend workmen's compensation coverage to volunteers. Uh, we're working closely with C I S. Uh, C I S is also maybe recommending, uh, two additional actions. One is a volunteer release form that people will sign before they volunteer. And then the second is, uh, maybe a medical coverage only. Uh, so we might be able to provide um, some medical coverage for folks that are injured in the course of volunteering. Typically, uh, when people sign up for that, it's it's, uh, you know, at their own risk and we don't really do a lot of high-risk activity in of itself, but in the event that somebody makes a claim, um, we have some sort of protection. Um, it doesn't cost us a lot to do the workman's comp and um, C I S thinks it's wasted money to some extent. But we just want extra coverage and so, uh, we're proposing the resolution again this year. Uh, we'll cover folks that volunteer and then we may come back with some additional coverage as we seek and get more answers to some of the questions we have about how does that work? How does those policies work? What do they cost? Those types of things.
Are there any questions?
We're going to approve this additional coverage, but we don't know how much it's going to cost.
This, the workman's comp, we do, we've been doing workman's comp for many, many years on our volunteers. I don't think it's a lot. Do you know what you think it is for our volunteers for the community events?
Maybe they pay fifty dollars.
Yeah, it's
Oh, it's nuts.
And that's what I told Josh. It's almost a no-brainer for us just to have it. Yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, is there a motion or a?
Yes. I will move to approve resolution eight point two-three extending the city of Amsoil's compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Amsoil.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any extensions? None? Motion passes. Moving on to agenda item seven, the city administrator report.
Well, as always, I will start off with the police and public works report that are in your packet. As you can see, our police department is been, I think, much more active uh, of late. Uh, you can look at the total uh, call volumes in the report or calls for service, I guess is the way I should phrase that uh, in the report. And, uh, if you look at past reports, you'll see a pretty uh, dramatic increase on that. And then also, if you look in the, uh, number of assistant calls, I think uh, those are down. We've changed our policy a little bit to where we respond to critical calls, but not just regular nuisance or traffic safety type calls, I guess. Is that right? Yeah. Come on up, chief.
So just so you all know, um, part of the A O As, when it says like Turner State and other agencies, D H S, um, just because it says A O A other agency doesn't necessarily mean that's out of the city limits. So there are quite a few of those that are actually in the city limits. So if like one of our residents commits some kind of crime or needs um, interviewed or something by another agency, they come over and they just want backup, we go with them, but I count that as a A O A because we're helping that agency. So some of those are not, um, in another city. They're actually here in our city. So um, I can actually adjust that to however you guys want to see it. So if you guys got some suggestions and stuff on what kind of numbers or percentages you'd like to see, I can adjust this report to reflect that. So this is just basically past practices on what we've done in the past. So, um, I'm willing to move whatever you guys need moved.
I think we're just looking for calls for third of the scoreboard.
Yeah.
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 Alright, thanks, chief. Yeah, and so anyway, I think we've been doing a really good job with the department. I think we've changed some policies uh, there and, um, you know, I I think it reflects, we've been, I think they've been doing a great job. I think the chiefs don't a good job at the helm. Uh, public works department, uh, I'll tell you, those guys have been busy and as we ramp up with all these projects, they're having to step up and take an additional role. Uh, and then, of course, summer events and summertime, just in general, uh, they become, uh, much busier. We are taking the time to, uh, try to get some of our staff, uh, starting to get into this training courses for, uh, sewer facility. So they're looking at that and keeping up on their uh, other certifications, our flower baskets and flags up on Main Street. Those things have to be hand-watered every day because we don't have a watering system. Um, and so there's a lot of extra work, but they're doing a good job and keeping busy. They are. They look very good. Uh, and then in my report, uh, just to talk a little bit about Corn Festival, I think tomorrow is our event planning meeting at ten thirty. Uh, everything seems to be moving as normal, along as normal for Corn Festival. Vendors are coming in well. Uh, the company that typically would, uh, contract to host the skate competition cannot do it, uh, this year. Did you ask?
No.
Okay, uh, they they can't do it this year, but we we have been in contact with the company that does roller skating. And we're considering a contract with them to do, uh, roller skating, uh, basically inline and flat skates, I guess they're called, uh, in the parking lot at Mill Creek. And then they're talking that they want to try to add some skate uh, competition or skate element to it for the skateboarder. So we are looking at replacing that with something that actually might expand uh, folks. Uh, so we've got a sample contract out to them. Uh, if the event planning committee is is, uh, supportive of it tomorrow, then we'll we'll go ahead and bring that contract back uh, to council for approval. Uh, the mayor's been working directly with G three. I believe the music is solidified.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, i- i- it's it's been a little bit of work to get everybody on the same page, but it seems like we got all the kinks ironed out and that we just and that and that element, um, I think is going to work out really, really well. Um, the internal staff, uh, we were we're going to brand this music on main. Uh, the internal staff been working on that as if the event planning committee is all on board with that tomorrow, we'll be rolling that out as kind of our our branding for this music on main. So, um, I, Triva seems to be invested. Uh, uh, she's like, what do you need? Uh, you know, she seems to be invested. So I I think it'll be a good, it'll be a good, uh, event to try and and see where we go.
Didn't she be invested since it's her event?
It is her event. Uh, you know, we, uh, I mean, anytime we contract for these events, it's because we just don't have the capacity to roll out more events. And so we're trying to look for kind of these public-private partnerships. So yeah, it's kind of, I mean, it's kind of a co-event, although we're we're at arms length for it. We're putting a lot of response. The same with the skate competition. We'll advertise it as an event for Corn Festival, but somebody's going to contract to do that work.
I think the way that I would do it is to give it a fair amount, but it's an event associated with the park. It's a direct innovation.
Yeah.
Want to make sure that things are running well. It reflects well.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll be with the band.
Uh, yeah, I think it's gonna work out, right?
Yeah. And honestly, if you're at an event like that, as long as the music is loud and it's, you know, people are usually pretty good.
I think what's been evident at the shoulder scare is that there's no
Yeah.
So that means that
And the other thing is families can come, which was always something people complained about. We tried to explain to them, well, we're we're doing an event for mom and dad. Uh, Friday night, we're going to do an event for the entire family on Saturday, but we just got lots and lots of complaints. So, um, there will be a s- a secure area, uh, for alcohol service. But most of it will be open so that you can bring the kids and sit and have dinner, listen to music. If you want a beer, you have a beer.
Did have one thing I was kind of confused, um, that the time of the event in the couple hours in the evening or is it a from afternoon to?
Yeah, when we contract for an event, we usually do it for like a twenty-four hour period uh, for whoever the vendor is. We do that with the skate competition so that they have access to the facility or whatever. I think her plan is, I believe it's from five thirty to eleven midnight. Uh, I Yeah. Yeah, and she can change that. She could start the event at three o'clock. We don't, I mean, we're we're fine with that. Uh, it's just at midnight, we have a new day, so it ends. So.
So will there be other food trucks or food vendors?
Uh, she'll have multiple food areas, but I think it's all from G three. I don't, I don't think there's other food trucks there. There'll be plenty of food trucks on Saturday, the next day at the Corn Festival. Yeah. Uh, okay, so that's moving along. It's doing great. Uh, superhero carnival. Uh, that's the twenty-fourth, so it is a week from Saturday, right? Week from Saturday, we we've got lots of booths. Uh, so we've got a bunch of new games. We've got some characters that are going to be there, so it's going to be a great event. And as always, you know, it's a free event for the community. And the the families and the kids to come out and there'll be popcorn and um, as long as the cotton candy machine's working, there'll be cotton candy. Uh, it'll, it'll coincide with the first Saturday market, and so there'll also be some paid vendors with food and snow cones and different things like that. Um, but down in the, down where the superhero area is there, everything we do is free, so.
With the Saturday markets, I know, uh, like for his mayor and myself, we go, I've gone down there. Uh, on Saturdays, we'd be present in the city. He's been down there, we've exchanged the I know the community realizes that when members of the council and all, even if it's just for a couple hours, I really urge our council members to be present at the event. It's just, even if it's just a drop in a little bit. Because like the comments, they come out of those, they talk to us, they engage in the questions.
Uh, MODS has received its final inspection. Uh, that seemed to be an ongoing kind of moving project. There was lots of little things uh, we ended up having to do that we didn't expect that we had to do. It wasn't in our original permit. Uh, but at the end of the day, we were trying to get everything final and so it is, it looks really nice in there. Uh, if you've not been in there, there's, uh, it's insulated, it's drywalled, it's painted, it's trimmed out. Um, and so, you know, we'll we'll end up putting that into our rental uh, rotation so people can use it for a party or
Is there AC? Is there AC in there?
There's portable AC units uh, that we can put in there and the people could use in the summertime. Yeah. Uh, and then one of the actions that we do need to do as part of my report is I I did meet with the, uh, staff members uh, as part of the Salient Sa- Salem Kaiser area Tran- Mr. Polispin Transit District, the SCATS M P O. Uh, and just discussed how that process, uh, was unfolding. And I will send an email out, but we do need to officially appoint somebody to represent the city on that committee. The committee, the policy committee meets monthly on the fourth Tuesday, starting at noon. And they will be talking about the Ammsville amendment to the contract. And so, you know, there's going to be some logistics to work out when that actually occurs officially as part of the MPO agreement, the inter-jurisdictional agreement. And the current policy board is also revisiting voting authority and is there weighted votes for some jurisdictions over other jurisdictions? And I let them know that I think if we're going to be included, we want to be at the table to weigh in on that conversation. Pardon me?
An hour to an hour and a half or so.
Yeah, I think they said.
On State and High across the street, south of the courthouse.
It's, it's, it's a critical committee to, it's not one that we would want to have somebody that can't make the meeting. So if you commit, you'll want to make sure that you're there.
Is there anyone that wants to volunteer?
Well, I'm happy to do it because it's part of my transportation commission that I'm on anyway. So, yeah, well, I, starting this month, will be attending the meetings as a guest. I've been invited, so.
I would be happy to.
Can, can we just go ahead and get a motion? What I would recommend is a motion to, if, if you so choose to appoint Della as our representative on the policy committee, make that motion and make the motion, if allowed, an alternative Doug would fill in as alternative. And then when you go there to the policy, maybe that's something to make sure that they have an alternate that we could appoint.
I know on most of our committees, they allow an alternate, so I don't think that that will be a problem there.
I haven't seen the, I haven't studied, I shouldn't say I haven't seen it. I haven't studied their current inter-jurisdictional contracts.
Yeah.
And they were changing, so.
Well, I do know that Mike told me it runs very similarly to our transportation commission and we're allowed alternates on that one, so. I don't think it would. Yeah.
Yeah, can we get a motion?
I'm going to appoint Della as our representative for SCATS. And if possible, to have Doug as her alternate.
Give me a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Excellent. As part of that, we will also have a staff member that serves on the technical advisory committee. I haven't decided who amongst us are going to do that. We're all stretched pretty thin. But we do definitely need to have an ongoing representative there. So it'll either be me or somebody from Public Works, but one of us will be on there. I alluded to this earlier, we, you know, managing these ARPA contracts are, are the biggest concern that I have is it's, there's not like a clear path. You know, a lot of established programs really have a clear path of these are the boxes you have to check. And we've gotten contracts and things like that. But even with just this deficit reduction act that was approved by the federal government last week, I was scrambling to find out because it had a clawback clause for any unappropriated ARPA money. And what does that mean? I mean, it's pretty vague language. And if you read the Reduction Act, which I did immediately, go to and start reading, I'm not sure how to, I'm sorry, I am not sure how we interpret that. But I did talk to our, our federal representatives and our senators and house members, staff members in their offices in the, in the local and Washington DC agencies. And they assure me that that's money that's been in federal coffers that hasn't been assigned to other things. That's not money that we've received currently. So we're dealing with that. There was some new reporting requirements by Treasury that came out. We've got site visits with Marion County for one of our grants related to the sewer engineering contract. It's an engineering contract, but their process is to do a site visit. So, you know, we'll follow all that process along. And like I say, we've had recommendations every time we take a contract forward. They want additional ARPA language memorialized in there just to make sure that they feel like we're checking all the boxes. Because even some of the administrative agencies are a little unsure of if they're, you know, the government's a very complicated animal and they just want to make sure we're meeting all the requirements. So, so we are working on that. If you have any other questions or anything that I missed, I'm happy to answer those.
Did we find anybody to agree or admire?
Oh, yes. I guess I should have gotten back to council. I apologize. Our two grand marshals have accepted to co-grand marshal the parade. And I think we're working on banners and stuff for them, so I think we're good there. I'm not sure about the honorary grand marshal for the, the, the school. I know one of our staff members were reaching out to our counterpart at the school and with the end of the year and all the activities, you know, people, it's, everybody's so busy doing things. The other thing is, is I know council wanted us to take some of the water reservoir murals over to the schools. Again, there just wasn't enough time between our last meeting to get samples put together and then coordinate with the school, so we weren't able to do that. So we will have a community area booth set up at Superhero Carnival. And we will have the renditions there and people can vote on their choice. So, so we'll make sure we do that and there'll be lots of kids down there, so it'll be a good, a good, a good test. One of the things we did, talk with our engineers today about the mural and explained how vital that is to the project because it's in our vision plan. Some of the tank exterior elements that are out that are new elements, they don't think or they're not sure if a mural will apply to those. And so we'll be bringing all of those options forward to council. I told them I think that's going to be a pretty important element. So if we had to go with a glass tank or a welded tank that'll accept a mural, the glass may have a little bit less maintenance overall. Those will be the decisions we'll have to make. But I think that's consistent with the direction that we've all wanted to see. So we'll bring more of that information. We're going to still come up with the design. We're going to get that out, find some companies that can apply that. And, and then we'll bring all those things forward to council. It looks like the timing is going to be somewhere in, maybe in July, where we can be out to bid for that reservoir project. So it's starting to move along pretty quick. Don't think it was in our report, but you may have seen we are going to start the well drilling project down at Porter Boone. We've done some notices out to the community to be mindful of the drillers while they're down there. So I think, I can't think of anything else, but I'm happy to answer your questions.
We had our MWAC meeting this month and City of Salem, Harriots and Yam Hill Transportation both got replacement bus funds from the buns. And Monmouth Independence got funding for their trolley. So. To the projects that won in our tri-county area. Yeah, but I'll tell you now.
There's an announcement here for the need for a meeting and your conference in October 12 through the 4th. If you have a venture to start a well drilling, we usually go over here. So we guys can have calendars.
Seems like when they send it out, it's got to know right now.
Well, yeah, and so we're bringing this to you now because as soon as that registration opens up, if we do not book those rooms the day the reservation opens up, you will not get a room at the coast hotel. So if you want to go, please let us know that you want to go. And we'll get you set up. It's worthwhile. I believe it's a worthwhile. If you're going to attend anything throughout the year, I think that LOC conference is a, is a good opportunity, not just because of the networking opportunity for folks in other cities across the state, but they're, they, they do tend to have seminars and some of the more recent or updated challenges that's facing cities and what, how other folks have addressed it. And so if, if you're, if you're less concerned with where you stay and you don't mind staying across town or could even be across the street, then it might not be as critical. But we'd rather get your room in early if, if that's what you want to do.
I think it looked like the next day, literally between the day and like when it opened up, I think four hours later, I was already across the street and not on this.
All rooms will be open in the first thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Gosh.
Well, it's on the October 12, of course, it isn't open yet, but it usually announces. So they'll start sending stuff out there in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
And they'll let us know when it's fully opened. So if you can plan it, yes, I'm going to go and let our staff know that way they can market. And then usually you can put like a to-do and they'll follow up.
Yeah. Yeah, just if you would like to attend, let us know. It's, it's easier to just to book you in, so.
If you know that you're going to go, say, yeah, let our staff know. And then. And then I'm going to be attending the mayor's conference in August. So that's in Brenton.
Yeah, and I, I guess I should touch because we, you know, I, I just sit here and realize that we have quite a few folks that haven't attended a conference before for LOC. And so just know that we are budgeted to pay for your room and all the approved meals at the conference, so all the dinners. You would pay for if you're, if you have a companion or significant other, you would pay for if they would like to go to those meals with you. But if you know all that in advance, let us know because we can, we can book it at, at the same time. The city can reimburse you for mileage at the IRS mileage rate for the conference so that your gas is paid over there. Typically, if we have a good group of folks going, we will try to coordinate a lunch or a dinner just as a group, just to have some social time. And the city will pay for that as well. So I'm trying to think if there's something else. Mm-hmm. Yep. So.
This is just city council members, city administrators.
That's who goes, mayor, city counselors, city administrators.
Last year, I was supposed to make just for the final, I could do other banquet here. And then I think.
Yeah.
You could have.
I mean, your, your, your spouse, I think, could attend the conference. I guess you would just pay for it, right?
Yeah, there's a companion rate that I've seen before that people have done.
And sometimes they have tours to like local breweries and development areas that are fun little tours. You can sign up for those separately, get your reservation, your hotel, and then sign up for those. But they do fill up as well. And oftentimes what will happen is, you know, the spouses might take the tour. They're very interested and interesting and informative. And sometimes they show like development areas or they show redevelopment or economic development plans or different things that may be wastewater systems, who knows? But they'll, they'll have tours there as well. So there's a lot to do. And the conference is usually during the day and then except for the awards dinner, usually the evenings are open and you could go. I think it's in Eugene this year.
Last year, so tours have been like, they've been the forest area, the mountain area. And maybe it's builds and roofs. Lots of spouses that would go and be involved.
And I will say the ones I've attended have had really good classes on wastewater and water systems. So if you want more information, you're talking to the people who build them at the conference.
Okay, moving on. Is there anything for the Senate Board? None? Any comments? No more comments. There are, there is no executive session. We will postpone the meeting at 8:11.